City managers report, Mr. Berry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You stole a lot of my information. But that's okay, because we've been working very closely together on these issues associated with the COVID-19 response for the city. We'll go ahead and jump in here. You'll find that most of the information that I'll be sharing is on COVID-19. That seems to be most of the work that our team's been sort of committed to in regard to response and operational changes and impacts associated with finances and those sorts of things. For the council members that are participating remotely, I just wanted to alert you that I did send a revised copy of this presentation probably 15 minutes or so ago. So that's the one you'll probably want to follow along. There's a few changes compared to the one that I sent out just a little bit earlier. So as we do, we'll start out first with important dates in April. You all know that we are doing weekly press briefings regarding the community response to COVID-19 and sharing of information. Those briefings are here on the screen, will occur on the 7th, which is tomorrow, at 3:00 PM in council chambers. On that evening as well, we have the Planning Commission, which is scheduled to meet. We are encouraging social distancing, just as we did in this meeting. There will be the same limitation on seats and those kinds of things, and the same call-in options for Planning Commissioners as well. Good Friday is this Friday, and so offices will be closed. There will be no staff working regular hours then, except for those who have routine hours, like fire and police and public works and whatnot. Our next press briefing will be on the 14th of this month. The next regularly scheduled council meeting is on the 20th. Another press briefing the day after on the 21st, a week later on the 28th, and then finally May 4th is our next regular city council meeting, scheduled in the first week of May.
Can I interrupt you for a minute?
Yes.
A meeting that I don't see here, but I wonder if I maybe missed an email or something. The Board of Adjustment.
Yes, sorry about that. The Board of Adjustment is taking place, yes. I meant to mention that. We are planning to hold the Board of Equalization essentially in the original timeframe, and I cannot remember off the top of my head.
It's the 14th.
Okay, thank you for that. So the 14th, we are planning to hold that. We did send out letters to all of those who got the original letter that said that their taxes may be going up within that 10%, which is required of us, and encouraged them that if they do want to, you know, provide comments or speak about it or whatnot, to do so in advance via written comments, which we could then include to the Board. But yeah, that meeting is occurring as well. I apologize for not having it on the list. All right. Next, just want to talk briefly about the latest numbers. For anyone tracking the COVID-19 issues in the state, the North Dakota Department of Health has a great website full of all sorts of resources, and of course, one of the resources they have are the statistics that are updated every morning around 11 o'clock or so. These are the statistics as of this morning. 225 positive cases in the state of North Dakota, three deaths, I think is most familiar, most folks are familiar with. The trending curve is at the bottom of this particular screen and shows a continued rise day over day over day. We do have now 16 total cases in Ward County, and that too continues to climb. So, you know, we're monitoring the situation and adapting our operations accordingly, and I'll share some of that information with you as we go. We have, as you know, developed a COVID-19 task force. That task force, I'll talk a little bit more about in addition to some details in each of these other operational responses. The Joint Information Center and various press conferences have also been started and continue. We've made a ton of different kinds of operational adjustments. We do have the open meetings changes, which have been communicated to you. The continuity of government preparations are continuing, and I'll share a little bit more about that. We've also included financial modeling and are also having a relook at the 2020 budget to see if there are any adjustments that we need to make in and around the budget because of the economics associated with the COVID-19. So let's get into some of these in detail. The COVID-19 Task Force is a 17-member task force, including internal and external representatives. We have Ward County participating, our mayor's participating, and a number of support staff and lead department heads are also participating in this. And we're dealing essentially at the task force level with just about everything you can imagine. Anything that comes up gets on the list, and we just start working it. I think we've had over half a dozen of these just in the last two weeks or so, and we've dealt with issues from employees, technology crisis preparations, operational adjustments, services, communications, everything that you could imagine. And the mayor was correct, we don't really have a playbook for this. So we're sort of monitoring what others are doing, coordinating closely with health agencies and the governor's office, and also looking to peers as well, and sharing information with and getting information from the North Dakota League of Cities. There are a lot of resources out there, and we're tapping into those and using that knowledge to help improve our planning and approach in managing through this particular situation. The Joint Information Center has been initiated. We do not have an emergency operations center that's been initiated yet, and there doesn't appear at the moment to be a desire to start or initiate the emergency operations center. Instead, this Joint Information Center is what is being predominantly utilized for the collection and sharing of information. It's divided up into three different groups, our subcommittees, a health, a community, and a business subcommittee. It is a whole-of-community approach, which means it's not just being led or being staffed or, you know, by city of Minot personnel. It includes the agencies that are listed on the screen here, including First District Health, Trinity Health, Visit Minot, Area Chamber of Commerce, North Dakota Health and Human Services, Ward County, the Parks District, schools. It's essentially everyone that we feel needs to be involved in the local information sharing and ultimately communications and response. And so that's been continuing, and that is a group that we rely on heavily in our task force as it relates to different activities and updates and information sharing. And we work closely with members of the Joint Information Center in helping to pull together our communications and information sharing that we are putting into the media briefings weekly now. As you all know, open meetings have been adjusted by executive order of the governor, and so the physical presence requirement is no longer required. We do not have to provide a physical location for the public to meet, which is what the North Dakota Century Code does require under normal circumstances. You'll notice this meeting, we have attempted to discourage attendance but not eliminate it. And so I'm grateful that the community has heard our request, and we haven't had to take more drastic measures at this point. So our goal is to continue to be able to use technology to the greatest degree that we can to encourage separation. That may be frustrating for some of our public who might want to provide comment, for example, on an item or an issue that the city council is going to be addressing in the agenda for the evening, or Planning Commission for that matter. It may also be frustrating because they may feel that they want to reach out and say something to the council during the public appearances portion. So we're trying to continue to encourage that, and we've developed a website portal on our form center portion of the website where community members can go to the website, click the meeting, write their name and information, type their comments up, and then we can get that information to the city council, provided that it is submitted on noon the day of the meeting. So as long as we get these comments, we will get those printed out, we'll get them to you. I would encourage the city council to be aware of that process, because that way you'll want to be attentive to receiving these comments in a sufficient time for you to consider them in any action that you might be taking the evening of the meetings. Additionally, you know, they are free, as they have always been, to provide comments to you via email. Many of them have your email addresses. I know you've been receiving comments. I would encourage you to help us by bringing those comments that those individuals want to have the rest of the council aware of by forwarding those or bringing them to council meetings, so that they can be shared, if that is the desire of the commenter. So anyway, we are trying to continue accessibility in these meetings to the greatest degree we can while also socially separating. We are working on continuity of operations plans inside the city for this specific crisis. We are identifying a number of different planning scenarios associated with this crisis, and we're trying to do so by getting ahead of the game instead of waiting for these issues to happen. So we are modeling currently and developing plans to accommodate what-if scenarios, and that is to say, what if our workforce got ill or was isolating or quarantined, and that number in our workforce was about 25%? So if 25% of our workforce was down because of any of those circumstances, what would we do? What would our operations look like? How would we perform? We're also modeling that scenario at 50% down, and then finally at 80% down. And what you'll notice is that, of course, the situation vastly changes when we go from a fairly low or inconsequential number to a fairly high number. In our planning, we will be identifying minimum manning and backup criteria. We'll also be doing additional cross-training, as that's been done in many cases already. We are also encouraging reallocation of staff resources, particularly for critical areas, if we get to an 80% down situation, and we'll also likely in that situation be shutting down services. We, of course, will not be shutting down critical services, we'll be shutting other types of services down. And all of this planning is in the process right now and is being pulled together in these continuity of government operations plans. That information is all due by the end of this week, and will be reviewed and consolidated, and then we'll ensure, if there are any questions or follow-ups that need to happen, that that does occur, because we want to make sure that we are planning and prepared for these possibilities. And of course, we don't anticipate any of these possibilities at this point in time, but we certainly want to be prepared for them. Moving forward, we are also monitoring the economic impact and trying where we can to respond accordingly. We are monitoring very closely a lot of the federal legislation that's coming down, because it impacts not just our residents and our business owners, but it impacts us as well. For example, expanded unemployment insurance, payment for leave and sick leave, those things are also being mandated by the federal government, and they impact our organization as an employer as well. We also are looking at other types of economic mitigation measures that are coming down at the federal level, and we are coordinating with our local economic and commerce-based organizations to ensure that they are aware, and they are, they're tracking this information as well, and that we're sharing that information. We did hold an IEDC Steering Committee meeting to do just that, and we have another one scheduled for this week, to discuss local impacts and identify if there are additional steps that we can take on a local basis, and what information is being shared and utilized across the state and across the country to sort of mitigate these efforts or impacts associated with COVID-19. So that work continues. Unfortunately, as a city, there's not a whole lot we can do, but we are doing what we can where we can and continue to be open to additional adjustments that mitigate the impact on local businesses. There are a number of good resources available. I've thrown a couple of them up here on the screen under the local information section of the slide that you see here. Moving forward, I wanted to touch base, because as this crisis is impacting our citizens' health across the state, and it is impacting, of course, businesses as well. And when it impacts businesses, it impacts our finances as well. So wanted to take a quick look at this. What I've done here is I've identified more or less the top 10 revenue sources for the city outside of grants. You'll notice that our budget for this year was almost $275 million. So these particular resources identified on the screen here represent $100 million of those, because most of the money that's included in our budget is coming from state and federal grants, like flood control, NOS, and so on and so forth. So we are looking at these particular revenue sources, because we feel like we need to monitor them for potential impacts associated with the economic climate that's resulted from COVID-19. So you can see on the bottom, we have the various type of revenue source, utility revenues, sales tax, special assessments, and it continues over to the right. We have in percentage on the scale going north of what we had budgeted for, particularly this year, as anticipated revenues, which are included in dollar figures inside the columns. If, so what we did last week, the finance team members and I sat together, and we attempted to try to remodel our projections for budget revenues going forward. As you know, we're only about, at that point in time, we were only about three weeks into this, and there's a lot that we don't know. So I will tell you that these are best guesses at the moment, but we have to start someplace. When we did this work, essentially, this is what the revenue impact looks like. You'll notice that some revenue sources are not impacted. For example, utility revenues, special assessments, property taxes, three of the first bars on the left side of the screen. And that's highly likely. For example, in utility revenues, we don't expect people to necessarily use, drink less water, or use less, you know, use less sewage or garbage or those types of things, although that can happen to a minimal degree. I can tell you, when I was a Public Works Director going through the Great Recession in the ninth fastest-growing city in the United States, we didn't see any really impacts at all to utility revenue, except for connection fees. We don't rely heavily on connection fees in Minot, because we're not growing that quickly. So we essentially estimated that the utility revenue impacts from COVID-19 are going to be unnoticedable. If you move to the next column here in sales taxes, you'll notice sales taxes, we are predicting a 25% reduction in sales tax collections associated with COVID-19. There are certainly some businesses that are doing quite well in this new economy, and there are others that are hurting enormously. And to get a sense of exactly how those balance out or whatnot has been very difficult for us to do. But we're anticipating, at least at this point in time, after modeling a month-by-month projection going forward through the rest of the year, that there's going to be potentially around a 25% total year-over-year reduction. As you continue to the right, you can see the other reductions, like state aid from sales tax, down 15%, highway funds that we get from the state, down 30%, interest that we have, I mean, interest rates aren't really great, but now they're really awful, so we're going to see at least about $1 million, we anticipate, of reduced interest earnings. Of course, that money goes generally to ending fund balances and gets reprogrammed in future budgets. But that money was anticipated and was budgeted for use this particular budget year. Parking facility charges, hub city revenues, another big one that we're going to talk a little bit more about here, airport revenues as well. So you can see, we have a number of different funding sources that we anticipate are going to be impacted. It is possible they could be impacted a lot less than this, and it's possible that they could be impacted a lot more. We just really don't know at the moment, but we want to be thinking this through and identifying approaches to how we could mitigate for this. So total, in total, the anticipated revenue reduction impact could be around $10 million or so, if you add up all of those primary revenue sources. You'll notice that if I go back here, I didn't talk really about special assessments or property taxes. I'll do that here in the next screen or two, because it is important to kind of think about property taxes and special assessments a little bit differently. So in summary here, the major revenue sources are identified on this screen, and I wanted to spend just a little bit more time talking about sales tax and hub city funding. And then we have a situation that we need for you, we need some direction from you as it relates to a couple of projects that are in the hopper at this point in time. So we'll talk about that here in just a minute. Getting back to property tax, I did want to say that
State Manager Berry?
Property taxes and special assessment revenue has already largely been collected. And, you know, that typically happens in February time, February, March time, so we don't anticipate a major impact. And in addition, that revenue is typically in arrears anyways. We do anticipate that there will be a property tax impact in the future, perhaps in the next 12 to 18 months, but at this point in time, we are not modeling any adjustments to property taxes, tax revenues, and therefore not making at the moment any major plans for adjusting projects and operations that are funded predominantly by property taxes or special assessments. Moving on to sales taxes, this is a slide that just reminds the city council what the allocation of sales taxes are for the city and have been included in the 2020 budget. So you'll notice, first penny includes 50% of that going to flood control, 10% to tax relief, 15% to economic development, and 25% to improvements. And the second penny, we have 40% to NOS, 18% to tax relief, and 18% to flood control, and finally, 24% to infrastructure. We did receive, we did budget last year, $10 million of anticipated revenue per penny. And when we made the budget for this year, we used that same projection, because you have to understand, when we essentially start working on the budgets, usually May, Maytime or so. So what we did notice is that by the year-end of last year, the fiscal year 2019, we did post revenues of $11 million per penny. So we did take in $2 million more, one for each of the pennies. And so that's given us a little bit of a buffer for this year, because those $1 million on each penny wasn't necessarily allocated, because we made the budget this year off a $10 million per penny, not $11 million per penny. So we have a little bit of a buffer there, which is actually helping us. Nevertheless, there are impacts. When you include that buffer, there are still impacts associated with declines anticipated across the sales tax allocations. And in first penny, this is what they look like. The first penny categories are on the left. The 2020 budget numbers are what we expected to earn in revenue, based on a $10 million allotment for each penny. The revised projection is downward from $11 million, which is the actual, which is why the numbers won't be a percentage match across the board. And then the difference in reduction is what's on the very right-hand column. So we've done that for the first penny, also taken the same approach for the second penny, so you can kind of see what it is in total that we're going to expect reductions in sales taxes for this year. If you kind of lump these similar categories together, we have tax relief in the first penny and tax relief in the second penny. So in total, we're expecting about a $470,000 potential impact, which is the equivalent of about 2.3 mils. We've talked with the finance team, and we believe that there is enough reserves to counter this, and that will be our first priority, with your blessing, is to shore up any property tax relief dollars, so that there is no impact to the overall mill or funding for the property tax relief. The secondary to look at is improvements and infrastructure improvements. They're very similar in regard to what those categories finance, but they're just called something a little bit different and are, of course, each separated out in each penny. So the total impact there is about $800,000, and we are looking at projects that we can potentially modify or delay or postpone, for example, in order to balance that $800,000 potential reduction. Now, because we did collect a little bit more last year, again, there is some opportunity to use some reserves, potentially to offset reductions in projects at this point in time, and that information will be provided to you separately once we can get to a recommendation. We don't really have a recommendation on sales taxes just yet, we're just kind of laying out the issues, and we have another meeting scheduled for later this week to evaluate what the options and recommendations might be for your consideration going forward. Lastly, flood control is also potentially being impacted here to the tune of about $1.1 million, if the 25% overall reduction is to occur as we anticipate. The good news here is that that should not delay the project, because we are still continuing to use reserves, and so what we would do is essentially continue to use those reserves, keep the projects on schedule, hope to make this up in future years, or potentially, if we can't, then maybe something else, like bonding a little bit more, a little bit sooner could also take place. So, but these are the kinds of things that we're working through right now in order to get a better handle on how to overcome these impacts. So it's a bit of a work in process. If I could move on to hub city funding, this is the one that we're going to need some direction from the city council on. As most everyone has realized, oil prices have tanked across the country and across the globe. We had been experiencing, you know, close to $50 a barrel prices, you know, as of two months or so ago, and now we're just around $20 a barrel. Those are pretty big impacts. We've also known that production has been reduced out in the Bakken, and it's very difficult to try to understand fully how much that reduction is and how long those reductions and price reductions are going to last. So we have been modeling this at a number of different scenarios, anywhere from about a 25% to a 50% overall reduction in revenues. There's a bit of good news in that we had, under the new formula, been experiencing increases in our revenues under the hub city funding formula. You'll know that the state's fiscal calendar is different than ours. It is a, you know, midsummer to midsummer, essentially July to June basis, and ours is a full calendar year. So we had enjoyed a little bit of those increases. We're going to see reductions in those going forward. The question is, how big is the reduction, and how long does that reduction last? Those are things that we're going to need to model. If you look here on the screen, the sort of green table there, the difference that we originally modeled was about minus 3.16 million. That's at the 50% reduction basis, because we had anticipated receiving 6.3 million. So when we revised our projection down to 3.14, that left about 3.16 million in difference that we were thinking we're going to have to cut hub city projects or activities off of. We've recently, and I should have had the WDEA projection, the lower-left here, the Western Dakota Energy Association, we sat in a conference call within a day or two or so ago, and their prediction for us is a reduction of around 1.5 million. So we think maybe we modeled a little bit too conservative. Their number's about 1.5 million, you know, who really knows at the moment? It could be somewhere between those two numbers, or it could be the 1.5, it could be the 3 million or whatnot. There are four line items that are included in this year's budget for hub city projects: the Northwest Fire Station #5, the City Hall retaining wall, equipment purchases, and highway reserves. And you'll notice that equipment purchases, I've broken those out just because I figured you'd want to know, well, what do we mean, equipment purchases? And what are those? And how much are they? And what's the status of each of those purchases? That occurs on the, that information appears on the very right of the screen. And then highway reserves, what exactly is that? And what amount of projects and what's the status of those projects also occurs there? This may be a valuable screen to go back to, should you want to, so we can do that a little bit later. But I just wanted to let you know that we do need to likely plan for a reduction in the hub city funding allocations, at least to the $1.5 million level, and possibly slightly more than that, too, or maybe even three. We do have an opportunity to revise these numbers going forward, and we will continue to do that as we get additional information. But where we stand right now, we just don't have a whole lot of information, and we have no idea how long this might last. And so we just need to plan accordingly. So essentially, I'll back up here, the question that we have for the council is on two particular projects, and we're not picking on these projects for any other reason other than we are at decision points in those projects. And the two projects that I'm referring to are the Northwest Fire Station #5 and the City Hall retaining wall. And the reason that is, is because we are either letting contracts right now or need to award bids. And so we just need to have your confirmation. If you want one or both of those projects to move forward, then we need to look for other areas where we're in, in what's on this particular screen, where we were going to cut at least $1.5 million. You'll notice highway reserves, most of that is committed and in process, because it's bound up in the 31st Street reconstruction at 1.3 million, and they're already out there doing work. Those contracts are signed, and it's a DOT shared project as well. The Burdick Viaduct, maybe there's $200,000 that could be set aside there if we don't continue with that study. Up in equipment purchases, some of these purchases have occurred, others are on hold, or we could hold, I should say. So there's some dollars there available to get you to the 1.5 as a minimum and potentially more, if that's where you wanted to be. So like I say, this might be a valuable screen to come back to. If we look at, therefore, the two remaining line items in the hub city funding area, you look at the Northwest Fire Station #5. The budget remaining on the project because of the design is 1.15 million. The initial bid has come in at $3 million for construction, so we have a new cost gap of 1.85 million. Keep in mind, when we talked about this project initially through the budget workshops, the Northwest Fire Station was supposed to be constructed over a number of years, and the council encouraged us, if we could, to move this project up, and our plan was to move it up, but we'd already set the budget at that point in time. We had informed you that, in order to move it up, we'll probably pull some reserves and use those reserves. and use those reserves to pay for the construction, since it'd be one-time money. Things are a little different now, right? We may, if you decide to continue this project and keep it budgeted in the Hub City Funding amount, we may be able to rely on that 1.15 remaining in the Hub City Funding. But we'd have to shore up the difference of 1.85 someplace. We're not done there, though. Because if we build the fire station, we still need to identify another million dollars in order to equip the fire station. This is safety equipment. This is other equipment, including, you know, fire vehicles, for example, you know. So there's additional costs, once we go down this road with the Northwest Fire Station, that are going to require us to shore up as well. If you look at the City Hall Retaining Wall, it's a separate project. About $2 million of the retaining wall is being financed out of Hub City Funding. And we had initially anticipated that the City Hall Retaining Wall would be constructed this year. In order to accommodate that and avoid a construction mobilization and access problem with the Maple Diversion Utility Relocation Project, that's going to occur here also on Second Avenue in front of City Hall, we decided to push the utility relocation project out a year to allow for the City Hall Retaining Wall to go this year, so there wasn't a conflict. If we are to push the City Hall Retaining Wall, we would like to keep the schedule for the utility relocation project of the Maple Diversion Flood Control portion intact for next year, which means that if we push City Hall Retaining Wall, it can't happen next year, it would happen the year following. So it puts a two-year delay on that project. The reason we bring up this information is because on the fire station, we have a bid award that's pending, we need to take an action on. We either need to say yes, we're going to accept the bid and move forward with that project and find the funding to do it, or no, we're not going to accept the bid. We want to get back to the bidders, so that they can make appropriate plans for their work. And on the retaining wall, the contract has not been signed yet. We don't have a signed contract, and we haven't signed our portion of the contract. So there is an opportunity to sort of stop that project as well. I mentioned to you earlier that when we were talking about the fire station, we had anticipated that we might be able to use some ending fund reserves from the general fund to make up the difference for the fire station. And the same is true if you wanted to move the City Hall Retaining Wall forward. You could use those same reserves and essentially move the City Hall Retaining Wall, thereby replacing the Hub City Funding as the source with instead general fund reserves. So you could do that with either of these projects. If we agree that 1.5 million is roughly the number we need to shave off Hub City Funding, you know, certainly taking the retaining wall off gets you there. Taking the fire station off gets you close. There's probably a couple purchases that we talked about on the screen preceding this that maybe you'd add to that to get to your 1.5, then we can hold there. But if you do move the fire station forward and use general fund reserves to make up that difference, we'll probably have to go deeper into the reserves to make up additional costs to bring that station online next year, as had been hoped. So I bring that up to you, because those are sort of our challenges on the Hub City Projects. We don't have quite the luxury of time on these two projects because of where they are in their evolution with regard to the bid award and the contract that's pending. So I think what I'd like to do is pause here for a moment. And it's a little unconventional in the city manager's report to do that, but I think it would be, based on the information presented so far in the presentation, I'd like to, with your permission, pause and get your thoughts and impressions on these two projects or anything else, because that's the area, and these projects we just need to go, no go on before we can, because we really need that answer before we can make any more progress on them. So I'll pause, Mr. Mayor, and turn it over to you.
Okay, so what we'd be looking for then is discussion and direction from the council as a majority may take a vote, depending on where everyone's guidance is being directed. So with that, and I'll look to the folks on the phone right away, perhaps. Any of the aldermen on the phone line wish to address this directly to begin with?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Alderman Straight.
I would, at this time, I would move to hold the progress on Fire Station Five and on the City Hall Retaining Wall for a period of six months, until there would be a better understanding of the budget realities the city faces.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. I need to look to staff. I'll look to our city engineer Lance Meyer to see if that would create a problem with the current bid that is out there, or the retaining wall that is also on a timeframe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Alderman Straight. Just some additional information for you with that motion. If that motion would pass, we'd effectively have to cancel that project, because we're not allowed in the contract documents to hold the project that long. So we'd have to cancel it and rebid it at a future date.
Mr. Meyer, are we talking about the fire station? Or are we talking about the city retaining?
City Hall Retaining Wall, for sure. Generally speaking, in AIA contracts, which is what the fire department's architects used, they have similar language. Once you bid a project, the owner has to make a decision. It's either 30 or 60 days is typically the timeframe you have.
So we'd be looking at rebidding both?
If that's your motion, correct, if that would pass.
Mr. Mayor?
Alderman Straight.
If I could, I guess I would move to hold those projects for one-year time, then.
I'd look to the second.
I'd agree.
Further discussion on the motions that are before us. I'd look to Mr., our Public Works Director here, Dan Jonison, to maybe provide a little more information.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I just again want to reiterate what the city manager said. If the retaining wall project is held, that is going to delay the Maple Diversion Flood Control Project. Because, like he said, we have utility relocates that we have to do from water and sewer that goes across where the diversion is going to go. We push that off so that it didn't conflict with the retaining wall work that would be going on now. Because the contractor for the retaining wall would have basically none or very limited access to get in here when we're doing the work. That's why we push the flood control utility relocation work off to next year, so the retaining wall could be done this year. So if you move the retaining wall to next year and do it then, that is going to move that utility relocation down the road another year, and that is going to move the rest of the Maple Diversion Project down the road another year beyond that. So I just wanted you to be aware of that.
Or perhaps Mr. Jonison kind of alluded to, or push the retaining wall two years to avoid that conflict.
Yes.
Other questions for our Public Works Director? Alderman Wolski.
Mayor Simma, thank you. Mr. Jonison, I appreciate the clarification, just for the public's sake, and I think the other members of the council. My intention and assumption in seconding the motion, you know, this is a year to put off a significant investment in an uncertain revenue climate. And my hope as a council member, who will not be making decisions three months from now, would be that we would keep flood protection on its, you know, priority path and make sure that that utility relocate gets done as soon as absolutely necessary. Because my assumption would be that if anything might end up with funding, it could be a federal interest in an infrastructure project. I mean, there's still a lot of conversation about what might be coming down from the federal government. So even though the motion says one year, I think it was assumed that it would essentially be the put off until 2022 and keep flood protection on the primary path.
Further questions for Public Works Director? A look to the phone bank.
Mr. Mayor?
Alderman Olson.
I don't have a question for Mr. Jonison, but I do have a comment. We obviously are forced, or faced, I should say, faced with making a very difficult decision tonight. Having been on the council for a number of years, we have pushed this retaining wall project back several times. And though it may seem unimportant to some people in the public, we do know that it is vitally important, and it does play into our flood control. And so I cannot support the motion as it is. I would support the motion of holding the fire station, but not the retaining wall.
Mr. Lakefield.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I just wanted to point out a couple of things. The notice of award has been issued on this project. We don't have a signed contract back yet, so we're kind of in a little bit of a limbo area with this project. The contractor potentially has some costs that have been incurred already at this point. So if we were to cancel this project completely, there still is the potential that we would be responsible for some costs associated with this project. And to quantify that, we really don't know at this point. When I talked with Mr. Meyer earlier, this is something that I don't think we've had occur in his career here. So we're kind of in a little bit of uncharted territory with this course of action as well. In our meetings earlier this week, we did kind of walk through some scenarios for some additional potential funding sources to carry forward with this project. As Alderman Olson pointed out, this is a maintenance-type project that is long overdue. We've had a lot of discussion on it. Obviously, the cost was more than was initially anticipated, and we've worked through that to come up with the funding with this. Should the Hub City Funding decline, I think there are some other alternatives we could use to fund this project. And I just wanted to point out, too, in one of our budget priorities, for the 2020 budget, when we crafted this budget, was that we were placing priority on maintaining current and existing assets before we expand with new assets. And this would be a maintenance-type item of something that we already have in place.
Any questions for our Finance Director?
Mr. Mayor, if I could make a comment?
Alderman Straight.
Mr. Mayor, I'd be willing to amend my motion to include that the flood protection project moved forward, but the initial intent was to hold because of the concern regarding the finances of the City Hall Retaining Wall for one year. But to move forward with the flood protection utility, necessary movements that are necessary to move those utilities, sir.
I'd look to the second for the same clarification.
Absolutely.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I might step on Mr. Jonison's toes here a little bit, but this did come up in our discussions in alternatives as well. And I don't think that this is an option of moving those utilities this year, because that hasn't been contemplated, that hasn't been put out to bid, and we're behind the curve on that to get that work put together and bid out and still get done this year. So that's a little bit of a dilemma for us as well.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question?
Alderman Straight, go ahead.
I guess, I would need some clarification. In all honesty, this is the first time I have heard that the utilities had to be moved were tied to the flood protection project. Can you provide some context and clarification for that, please?
We'll bring Mr. Jonison up here for the connection. And I believe it's more so for access than it is direct interlinking. Mr. Jonison.
Mr. Mayor, Alderman Straight, the utilities that have to be relocated are, we have an 18-inch water line that goes north in the area of Maple Street, that will cross where the Maple Diversion will go through. And then we also have a gravity sewer line that goes through there. Those need to be removed from where the footprint of the Maple Diversion will be excavated. So those lines will be taken, rerouted down Western Avenue and Second Avenue. A new lift station will be constructed over just to the east of the library. And those are the utility relocates that we have to do, so that when they come in and start doing the excavation work for the Maple Diversion, they are out of the way, and we are still able to provide water throughout the city and sewer. Because a lot of the area south of Burdick flows north, flows across where the Maple Diversion will go, and then continues north, and then east into our Muse Lift. So we're essentially rerouting those utilities, so they're out of the way when the excavation for the Maple Diversion Project comes through there.
And Mr. Jonison, and maybe I'll preemptively ask the question for Mr. Straight, the connection to that, to the retaining wall, is access? Because the retaining wall is going to shut down, I would assume, a big portion of the area otherwise that would be needed for the work that would be done the following year here, correct?
Mr. Mayor, that's correct. When the utilities get relocated, they're going to have to come down Western and Second Avenue. So they're essentially, those roads are going to be inaccessible out in front of City Hall. So the only access that the contractor to work on the retaining wall would have, would be down Sixth Street and through the back of City Hall. That's why we didn't want to have that whole road tore up down there, because he's going to have to have a lot of equipment coming in and out, and he's going to need the access to the north of City Hall on the Second Avenue. We, again, have to do work out in there, so it would block the access off to the loop of City Hall and to the PD area of City Hall out to the north. That's why we want to get this work done, or the retaining work done ahead of time, so it doesn't, I guess, delay the retaining wall work or drive the cost up. If we had that project going on and the contractor couldn't get in, it's going to delay the retaining wall project, too.
Any further questions for our Public Works Director? Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Further discussion, Alderman Wolski.
Mayor Simma, just to provide, you know, clarity on my understanding of what we're talking about here, too, which is that this moves the retaining wall to 2022 in reality, because flood protection, we want to keep moving. So I think that's my understanding of the motion. I am going to support it, because I appreciate the hard work that the staff has done over the last week, in terms of a couple weeks, trying to get a handle on what our revenue looks like. But my hunch is, is that, and my take on the world right now, is that we need to be very conservative in our estimates about what revenue we will have. We are at the very beginning of a wildly uncertain future. The projections, the assumptions that have gone into our five-year modeling, that have gone into our larger capital improvement plan, there are a lot of these things that simply, they are not the same today on April 6th as what they were on March 6th, just 30 days ago. And so this isn't the moment to be hoping on particular projects that we might be able to get there, or staying hopeful with revenue and working off assumptions from the past. This is the moment to, I think, get very small, get conservative, and take the things off the table that we can take off the table, and then watch and see how this unfolds. Because we just don't know. And, you know, the language that Governor Burgum and everyone has used over and over and over again is unprecedented, and it's, we're getting tired of hearing it, but it's still the most appropriate word. So given that environment, we cannot control our revenue. We can control our costs. And these are two significant high-spend areas where we can control our costs. I would also share that when it comes to the retaining wall, I think it is absolutely appropriate to put this project on hold for another reason, which is, I believe it should be married in some form, or tied in some form, to our larger City Hall conversation, which, again, is another project on our decision, in our decision future. High-dollar spend, significant revenues from many different sources, and also built on a lot of assumptions that has changed in the last 30 days. Assumptions about how much physical space we need to operate City Hall, which, you know, we have observed an extraordinary and incredible reorganization of this entire institution. we have observed an extraordinary and incredible reorganization of this entire institution in roughly a 14-day period. I think that reorganization allows us to challenge some of our assumptions on our space needs and analyze how this organization may look, given the new reality. Again, things that we just simply didn't contemplate prior to the last 30 days. So with, you know, those factors in mind, like I said, I think the larger concern is that the revenue is wildly uncertain. Let's be more conservative rather than less conservative. Let's look at creative ways to impact and bring projects together and challenge the assumptions that have brought us this far. I think this is an exceptionally prudent step and motion from Alderman Straight, and I'm going to support it.
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Padrigula.
Yes, I wanted to echo everything Alderman Wolski has said, and I think I probably should have listened to him a month ago at a meeting when he wanted to put the brakes on three or four different projects. The only thing I disagree on is the issue of public safety. I just can't in good conscience put off the fire station for one more year. We've been trying to get better protection in Minot for probably close to a generation now, and that's not something I feel comfortable doing. I'm willing to sacrifice a new City Hall for that, to be candid. Looking at maybe expanding the current facility just south of where we are now, in addition to all sorts of other holdbacks on various projects. So I agree, you know, almost completely with Josh, with the exception of that fire station. And I know the city manager is going to be telling us and has told us how it's going to cost money to operate. But I think with the kind of emergency we have now in terms of public health and safety with the coronavirus, it really would be advantageous to have more horsepower, more person power in our emergency services, and also have a station that's isolated from the others. I agree with everything Josh says, but I think I just don't feel comfortable putting off the public safety part of it. And again, I'm willing to sacrifice lots of other things and probably just about anything else, but I think we really need to go ahead with the fire station. So that's why I will be opposing this because of that one point.
Alderman Pittner.
Can you hear me?
I can now.
All right, thank you, Mayor. First-time caller, longtime listener. Just wanted to weigh in, I guess. I agree that this is a scary time. This is an uncertain time. There's a lot of moving targets that we're trying to hit. I think the thing, one of the items that I take from the governor's briefings is facts, not fear. And that, I don't want to become stagnant in our city. I don't want to be scared of growth or moving forward with projects on this. Both of these projects, I think, are long overdue. I'd hate to see both of them fall by the wayside. I guess I have some questions as well, one for Mr. Lakefield, and I'll say it, and you can approach. One, the cost that we would be looking at possibly incurring, I don't know if he can speak to those or not, I might not be able to, but what kind of cost would we be on hook for if we looked to cancel? One, or if both of the projects? And I guess we'll start with that one. And then I guess my second question, since I'm on the phone, it's kind of weird for me to be able to chime in, but as far as if, let's just say we move this project forward or we kicked it back two years and we saw inflation kick up on the retaining wall and/or the fire station, what kind of funding avenues would we be looking at? Would we be looking to pull out cash reserves to fund the difference if we got down to these projects? I mean, and maybe it's not, we're not feasible to project that far, but just wanted, I guess, maybe throw those ones out there and see what kicks up.
Thank you, Alderman Pittner. Cost cancel, or any projections for either or both?
Mr. Mayor, Alderman Pittner, I think right at this point, it's a bit of an unknown. We're assuming that the contractors incurred some bonding costs already at this point, the cost to issue the contracts to the subcontractors. There's also the potential that they would be looking for the ability to recoup their costs to bid the project as well, but we really don't know at this point. And that is something that potentially would, you know, be revealed in future litigation if they should go that route.
And for the second question, looking down the road two years, retaining wall, possible funding if you have a crystal ball as far as what that would look like?
Mr. Mayor and Alderman Pittner, again, you know, a few months down the road, this might look a lot different once we start seeing what the numbers are coming in. You know, the collections of these revenue sources lag a couple of months from when they actually become payable through the state. So we're at least two months removed from seeing the impacts on these revenues. So obviously, by delaying, if we wait until we see what the full impact is, we're going to be beyond the window to continue with this construction season. And as far as the future goes, some of that is going to depend on the priority given to other projects. I think Alderman Padrigula mentioned the City Hall project is another large capital project that we have on our radar screen, and some of it's going to depend on how we approach those projects and what priority is given to each one of those projects. If those projects change substantially and the revenue sources aren't quite as bad as we anticipated, we may be able to reprogram some of that money to these other projects to make up some ground.
Any follow-up, Alderman Pittner?
Not really, Mayor. I appreciate the answers, and I know I'm asking you to, again, read into a crystal ball, but again, I'm not a big fan of pushing these projects off. I'm not a fan of pushing off both of them, and I'm really not a big fan of pushing off either one of them individually if we can. So I, again, the motion as it reads, I think, to work smart in this scenario and be able to move flood protection along and maybe cut some costs by doing projects simultaneously and, again, being smart in that regard. I think, I think, I can't find myself supporting the motion as is, but I could find myself supporting one or the other projects if the council would deem them appropriate.
Mr. Mayor, and if I may, kind of elaborate a little bit on the response to Alderman Pittner earlier, you know, if the council were to take action and postpone, for example, the fire station project, you know, depending on the impact that we see in the Hub City funding, it may not be necessary to reprogram other revenues to cover that project. We won't know until some point in the future. And we had prepared a memo on some potential other alternative funding that we could use to backstop that should the Hub City revenues not be there to complete that project. And some of those were revenues that were previously programmed for the new City Hall project in future years because now it looks like the preferred location is going to be less than when we had programmed in future budget years. We also have some general fund savings or budget savings from 2019 and 18 that we have put back into ending fund balance. For general funds, we have some cash that would be available as a backstop as well.
Thank you, Mr. Lakefield.
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Straight.
Can you please ask Director Lakefield just to inform me and the public exactly, it's my understanding, I think we're 70-some million dollars in debt. Is that correct, sir?
Mr. Mayor, Alderman Straight, I don't have that number right off the top of my head, but I think the total is right around 90 million all in.
And that includes the flood control bonding that we are taking?
That includes everything, any revenue bonds that we have for utility, infrastructure projects, flood control, SRF loans, anything that we have outstanding. It also includes special assessment projects that have been done that we carry the debt for, that we collect from property owners in the future. That would be all-inclusive.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lakefield.
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Olson.
I do want to just comment briefly. I believe that we do have the funding in place to do the retaining wall. And I think that we also have the opportunity to follow through with what we said we were going to do. We have gone through the process. We have chosen everyone that is going to work on this project. All we need is a signed contract. We have the opportunity to invest in our city, invest in our infrastructure, and put some people back to work that probably haven't had a paycheck for a while. So I think that that is our responsibility. I agree with Alderman Wolski when he says that we need to be conservative going forward. I think that we will look at different projects differently, knowing what our funding source is. But we do have the funds in place to do this, and I think we need to follow through.
Any comment from anyone who hasn't spoken yet?
Mr. Mayor, this is Kelly Endershot.
Ms. Endershot, please go ahead.
I was just going to suggest that it might be beneficial for the motion maker to clarify the motion a little bit further, to specifically for the retaining wall indicate that the award of bid should be canceled, and then for the fire station project to specifically indicate that the bids that were received should be all rejected unless the intention of the motion and the council is to do that at a future meeting. I think it would be beneficial just to have that clarified.
Alderman Straight, do you want to clarify on the motion?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I would take staff's recommendations to be included in my motion to reject, I believe, the bid for the fire station and to hold, maybe is the language. That's why I'm going to rely on staff's recommendation, sir.
The second would agree that we, that the motion reflect the city attorney's comments.
Ms. Endershot, are you okay with what has been said?
Yeah, I think so, just for everybody's clarification that for the retaining wall project, the motion would include that the council would specifically be canceling the award of the bid that was previously done. And then for the second, the fire station project, the council would be specifically rejecting the bids that were received for that project. So in the event that this, either of the projects were to move forward at a later time, if this motion is approved, they would be completely started fresh, new bids, new bid openings, new awards of bids.
That is clear. Alderman Janser.
Mr. Mayor, I guess I would ask for clarification of the motion in terms of the issue of deconflicting the flood control utility movement elements from the retaining wall. And I guess maybe, is the motion still to push both of these out for a year or?
Motion would be, I believe, Alderman Janser, to cancel the bid for the retaining wall or to not sign it or incur those costs that could be coming and to push that out to 2022, if I'm looking for the second.
That would be my understanding, too, yeah.
And to delay, which would mean rejecting the bid for the fire station.
Okay, thanks.
Alderman Straight, did I encapsulate that?
What I heard, the city attorney say canceling the bids for the retaining wall and rejecting the fire station, yep.
Further discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Straight.
Yes.
Wolski.
Yes.
Sitma.
No.
Janser.
Yes.
Olson.
No.
Pittner.
No.
Padrigula.
No.
Motion failed. I would look for a new motion.
Mr. Mayor, I would move that we cancel the bid for the City Hall retaining wall project and move that project to 2022.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion outside of what has already been said. Last call for discussion. Please call the roll.
Wolski.
Yes.
Sitma.
No.
Janser.
Yes.
Olson.
No.
Pittner.
No.
Padrigula.
Yes.
Straight.
Yes.
That motion does approve, so once again, recapping, it'd be canceling the bid for the retaining wall, incurring those costs, and then moving forward with the fire station number five. I would look then to staff, to also to Mr. Lakefield, and likely our fire chief is watching at home as we would look forward down the road for those operating funds as well within the stand-up for the 2021 budget, if I'm not mistaken, as we bring it online.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to offer an additional motion here. My assumption will be that it will go down, but this is important to me, and I feel very strongly about this, but I think we should also, I'm going to move that we delay fire station number five to one year further into the future and take any necessary action on the current bid.
There is a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second here, Padrigula.
Motion and a second. Discussion on that motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Straight.
The reason I brought up the question regarding the debt, it's not that I'm not in agreement with Alderman Padrigula that public safety is important, but we are in the, to Alderman Wolski's point, we're in the early stages of a very difficult budget, and I think it's a, I don't think there's any reason why we couldn't reinvestigate this, say, at six months. But to go forward right now with all the variables that are out there, taking money from reserves to pay for this project, I think is not just short-sighted, but I think it's a little bit disconcerting that we are in some very tenuous financial times, and I think it's just, as one elected official that represents the public, I can't move forward with it just because I feel like the residents, I think if I saw Alderman Barry, or City Manager Barry's email correctly earlier today, I think we're looking at about $6.5 million that would have to be generated over, you know, basically taxes over the next number of years. And I don't mean to speak, if I'm wrong, please correct me, but I think at a time where budgets are tight, we're not sure of the mills moving forward, I think everybody is mindful of the stress on the public, on wages, and what we can pay for. I just think this is a project that, yeah, I think we all want it, but I think if we hold till we get a little more information, say it's even three months down the road, I think the public would have more confidence in their elected officials under the circumstances, sir.
Alderman Janser.
You know, I guess the way I look at this is that we made a decision to accelerate this project, to move it ahead a year, to get it done sooner, because we had sources of funding, including Hub City money and reserves that we could use to do that. Today, those sources are potentially strained and constrained by the shortfalls that we're going to experience. And, you know, we don't know when and if Mr. Putin and Saudi Arabia are going to figure out the price of oil. We don't know the duration and impact of the coronavirus. I mean, it seems to me like going back to what was the original schedule on this is not a terrible decision at this point.
Mr. Lakefield.
Mr. Mayor and Alderman, one of the issues that we have, and Mr. Barry pointed this out in the city manager's report, is this fire station project was originally budgeted over three budget years. And I did go back and review the meeting minutes from the question-and-answer session in both budget sessions that we had, both budget hearings, and there was some discussion about accelerating this project at the question-and-answer session, but there was also a discussion about the use of reserves, and there was no definitive direction to accelerate the project. So it was not budgeted all in 2021. It was still budgeted over 2020, 2021, and 2022. So at this point, we do not have the funds budgeted to award those bids for the construction of the fire station project. We would have to do a budget amendment to fund that project prior to awarding those bids.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lakefield. Questions for Mr. Lakefield or further discussion? Thank you, Mr. Lakefield. The motion is with a second to delay one year on fire station number five. Please call the roll.
Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry. Alderman Olson.
This is Kelly.
I'm sorry.
This is Kelly.
Kelly.
The second part of the motion was to take necessary action on the current bid. I'm assuming that means to reject all of the bids that we received.
Yes. That is affirmative.
Thank you.
Ms. Endershot. I'll pause one last time for the phone bank. Seeing no more discussion, please call the roll.
Wolfsky?
Yes.
Sitma?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yeah.
Pittner?
No.
Padraig Gula?
No.
Straight?
Yeah.
Motion is approved. So we have the direction on that, and I would just look to Mr. Lakefield as well to report back to the body for the cancellation of that contract, for those costs that are also incurred with that, so that we know what the cancellation of that is going to be impacting finance-wise. Thank you, sir. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council members, for your direction and guidance. And at the risk of belaboring this subject a few more minutes, I have a request to ask of you, and that is because we are looking at a delay in the City Hall retaining wall. And I don't know if any of you have walked by the retaining wall lately, but it's not looking good, which is the reason for doing the project. I would like to request, if we could get your direction, and we can bring a budget amendment back later if need be, that, you know, we were looking for a reduction in the Hub City, you know, funding area of anywhere between one and a half and three million dollars. We definitely got to the three million. We got over that. I guess I would like to request around fifty thousand dollars, I don't know what the estimate would be, for us to maintain the City Hall retaining wall to last between now and the next two years, understanding that, you know, there's no guarantees, but filling in the voids to avoid, you know, additional ice and frost damage, those types of things. You know, we did this a few years back, limped it along just a little bit more. And if I could just get your direction, that would be okay, and we could work on a budget amendment to at least try to preserve what's there now, to try to make it those two years, that'd be great.
Mr. Mayor, I think this particular item doesn't necessarily need action tonight. I think we can put this on an agenda for a future meeting. I'm happy to consider it.
Great.
If there's no objections from the Aldermans on the phone, we'd look for city staff to bring a budget amendment for discussion, likely within the next two weeks to a month.
That'd be great. All right, thank you for that. We'll plan accordingly. Okay, we'll press on here. Just a couple other slides to go. Just scheduled adjustments. I wanted to alert you and the members of our community that we are going to postpone cleanup week. That will not occur. We are trying to do the social distancing thing and trying to keep our sanitation workers as well safe from having to touch and be exposed to a lot of additional surfaces. We will allow for free drop-off at the landfill during cleanup week between April 27th and May 1st, so that we will do. But we were going to postpone the cleanup week and reschedule that for another time, hopefully after this crisis is over. Also, the recycling proposal that we were working on is going to be delayed as well. We do know that that is a community interest. As an agenda topic, it has a lot of community interest, and we want to encourage interest from the community. And of course, in the environment that we're in, it doesn't make a lot of sense for us to try to have that conversation at this point in time, so we're planning to postpone that. The NDR program review, I would make the same recommendation of you, because that does sometimes get a lot of interest from the community. However, we are on a deadline, as I understand it. Mr. Zakian can correct me if I'm wrong, but the gathering space project, due diligence on site three has been completed, and so has the environmental assessment. And for those reasons, I believe we're in a time period where we have to act one way or another on the gathering space project. For that reason, and really that reason alone, I will be recommending that we bring the NDR program review conversation back to city council for April the 20th, in that we can also talk about the City Hall, new City Hall project, and all of those kinds of things, and just kind of put that all together. And then lastly, strategic planning, you know, I don't know when we're going to be able to do that at this point in time, so my recommendation is to postpone that work as well. So those were just some of the things that are sort of on our radar that we are working on and wanted to just be clear about some of those adjustments. Moving forward, you are being asked really soon on the agenda to approve the 2021 budget schedule. And I wanted, because it's on the consent agenda, I just wanted to point out a couple quick changes to the 2021 budget schedule over previous budget schedules, so that when you approved it, you knew, you know, it's not necessarily obvious, but you knew exactly what was being proposed here. Couple of the major changes include that we are intending now to not hold a separate budget workshop, as we have in the last few years. We've held a separate special city council meeting to hold the budget workshop. I think, given the fact that the reorganization meeting, which is scheduled for June 23rd, you know, after the election, we'll have everybody sort of seated, we'll choose officers and that sort of stuff. It makes sense to just continue on with the budget workshop and not have to reconvene a whole nother special city council meeting to do that. So that's a recommendation. If you don't like that, you'll want to pull that item, or if you don't like any of these major changes, you want to pull that item before consenting to it, so that you can make whatever adjustments you'd like. Also, the question and answer meeting on the budget typically is a separate meeting. We'd like to put that in as a regular council meeting the last few times, because we have collaboratively developed the budget over the years. There doesn't seem to be a need for an entirely whole, separate meeting as a special city council meeting. As I recall, last year, we had about 25 minutes on the Q and A section of the budget, and that's good news, because it means we are working well together and collaboratively developing it over the year. And then first reading of the budget ordinance got moved up one week earlier, because we are attempting to try to move the first and the second reading to coincide with regular city council meetings. And if you like all of that, essentially the budget schedule that we've developed and placed in front of you for your consideration this evening includes no special city council meetings to do our work. We have coordinated all of the activities in this budget schedule to not require any special city council meetings. Now, of course, if you want to add one, you are free to do that, but I just wanted you to be aware that that's the recommendation that's been placed in the budget schedule for the 2021 fiscal year budget. Just finishing up here, we just want to remind everyone, the census is still going on. There are some extensions to deadlines that the Census Bureau has allowed, essentially two-week extensions on most areas, so you want to be aware of that. Self-response deadline was now moved to August 14th as well. Our response rate is impressive now, considering where we started, and I think we've attributed our response rate predominantly to slow mail. We got, you know, about two weeks delayed, because most of the folks in our community didn't receive their census documents until, you know, much later than most others. However, now that the mail has, you know, been received, you'll see that the Minot City response rate exceeds not only the North Dakota response rate, but also the United States response rate just slightly, but that is still good. That means we're trending well, and we do want to encourage everyone to continue to, you know, reach out to the Census Bureau and submit their information as soon as possible. There are still jobs available at the Census, with the Census, and if anyone's interested, you can log on to the 2020census.gov website, forward slash jobs. We are still looking for census workers in and around our community to be enumerators and go out and essentially do the door-to-door visits. The 2020 election is fast approaching. Today was the deadline for candidates to submit their signatures, to be considered for the positions. We have three open seats, and we have five confirmed candidates. They're on your screen here. And the election is scheduled for June the 9th in the municipal auditorium. So I thought you'd be interested in that, and I put that on the screen for your curiosities. Lastly, I want to thank the staff as well. The mayor covered this pretty well, but, you know, our staff are resilient, and they are prepared, and they are contributing in major ways despite all of the anxiety and all of the change and whatnot that's come from this crisis. And I'm extremely grateful to the staff for their contributions. We have had to get used to a whole, an entirely new way of working, and that's been difficult. And our staff have done a fine job in kind of rolling with the change that we've had to pursue, and things seem to be operating very smoothly. We address issues as they come up, and I'm just, I'm very grateful to the team for stepping up and helping through this particular crisis. It's been great. With that, that's all I have for you. I do think, I might just venture to say, this might be the longest city manager's report potentially ever. I apologize for that, but we did need a little bit of direction, and I'm grateful for what you provided to us earlier.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Any questions for Tom?
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Padraig Gula.
Not so much a question, but a comment. I guess, first of all, I wanted to thank him publicly for sending out the slides for the presentation. Tom speaks very quickly, and he has a lot to say, I think most noteworthy on this occasion. And it's good to have those materials in advance, so we can look through them and page through them as he's talking. So I really appreciate that. I asked for that to be done, and I appreciate that being done. The second thing I want to say is I don't think there's a need to apologize for a lengthy session. I think so far, from my perspective, the council meeting has been very productive. And I think this kind of interchange between us and the city manager, and between all of us on the council, with ourselves and with staff, is the way it should go. So I don't think it's been productive. We've fleshed out our positions, we've debated things, we've approved some things, we haven't approved other things. But from my point of view, this is the process that should be happening, and I don't think there's anything here to be apologetic for. I think it's been very productive so far. The rest of the meeting, I'm not, I'll reserve judgment on, but I think it's good to have this kind of intense dialogue between all the parties involved, so I'm very pleased with it and certainly very appreciative of all the work the staff has been putting in and trying to give us some financial projections in a very, very challenging environment. So good job to everybody who's been involved in this.
Further questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Straight.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I guess I wanted to check in with Tom a little bit about where the 10% revenue down on the airport came from. I certainly expected it to be much more, but a secondary question, I wanted to know if the city was considering, as Tom had stated in the slide, that the utility revenue was not to be down because it's fixed. But I wanted to just ask the question if we were considering giving residents an opportunity to maybe pay a partial payment, delay a payment. We have some accounts, be it storm, where we're collecting large sums of money from businesses that are basically going into a fund to pay for future development. And now's the time, I think, where we have to do our part as a city and look at utilities and how we might be able to save not just residents, but also businesses, or give them an opportunity, because so many businesses have been hurt in our community. I just wanted to talk a little bit about utility revenue and what the discussions are behind the scenes on that, sir.
Alderman Straight, certainly, that does open a Pandora's box for that, but Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The revenues at the airport that we're concerned about at the moment tend to deal a lot with CFC charges, capital facilities charges. Car rentals, as you know, are way down, air travel's way down, so parking fees, sale of gas. A lot of the enterprise-related activity revenues at the airport are anticipated to be impacted. You know that there are stories all over the place about, you know, planes flying with one or two or three people on them. Those kinds of costs, you know, or revenues essentially impact our revenues if we have planes flying around empty or not, you know, not having similar of load capacities as we have been accustomed to. So we're planning and preparing for that and having to monitor essentially what might need to be done in that particular case. There's some good news on that front. The airport director and the finance director and I have had some conversation about some of the, somewhat of what appears to be stimulus funding that could be coming. We got word that essentially some match requirements that we have traditionally had to meet, the 5%, for example, match on FAA projects, has been eliminated at this point in time, so that's going to find us some savings. Similarly, we're seeing the potential development of stimulus-type public projects that may also have a similar effect for us in mitigating some of the other projects that we've been maybe monitoring or concerned about. But that would be predominantly our concern in the airport area. In regard to your question about payments for utilities, you know, we can't extend loans to residents, but we can do per payment plans. And so for those requiring additional assistance, we have been working with individuals on payment plans for the city to ensure that essentially the utilities are on a plan to be paid back, but in a way that is sensible and reasonable and responsible within regard our payment guidelines. So some of that work is already underway, and we've had, we have some people, I believe, that have taken advantage of that. So hopefully that addresses your two questions.
Alderman Wolfsky.
Mayor Sitma, thanks. Mr. Barry, as kind of a follow-up or compliment to Alderman Straight's comments regarding utility bills, I think the Storm Sewer Improvement Fund is sort of an addition to our utilities, that I don't know if we fund that forward or if it, if we're planning on revenue from, you know, 2020 to pay for our 10th Street, I see Lance getting up, project. But that's a particular cost that the city incurs, and depending on the length and circumstances, this is an area where I think we have the, maybe the opportunity to save some money. And it's, on the residential bills, it's not that big a deal, but on some of those commercial properties, it gets pretty significant. So I think this is something, I think it's a great comment from Alderman Straight and something we should be looking at in terms of a way to provide relief, if there is a way.
Thank you.
Further questions or discussion? Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Next on our agenda item is number five. This is the city attorney's report that was attached. Are there any questions or comments, I guess, first from our city attorney?